Madam Mayor, recording has begun. Director Phipps, have you started the recording? Madam Mayor, recording has begun. Madam Mayor, can you hear me? Director Phipps, have you started the recording? If only my children would listen like you guys all quiet it down so nicely, my children wouldn't do that. As soon as she starts the recording, I'm going to officially start this meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, recording has begun.
Thank you very much. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. We will do a roll call first. Director Phipps?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilman Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? All right, first item on our agenda is to approve the meeting agenda. Do I have someone that would like to approve the meeting agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the June 13th, 2023 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all right, I thought it was me. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I hope that you all have had opportunity to look at the minute meeting, the meeting minutes from May 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve them as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented dated May 23rd, 2023.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is a very special evening. I'm sure this is why you're all out here, not just to go to one of our meetings, but you know, my ego will say it's here for you to see us. But we have two great police officers that are going to be sworn into our force. I'm going to have the chief come up first and do some introductions before we officially swear these new officers in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my honor tonight to present to the council two new officers who will graduate the Anne Rondell County Police Academy tomorrow. They've been in seven months of intense training in an agency that believes in the 21st century policing plan. I have here Jacob Schor. He's a graduate of Paint Branch High School in Burtonsville, Maryland. That's where my wife graduated from. He achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America, and he completed a two-year religious service mission with the Church of Jesus Christ, the Latter-day Saints in Utah. He was recently engaged to his long-term girlfriend Naomi, who's here with us tonight, and he's eager to serve our community. Standing next to Jacob is Jacob, Jacob Layden. He's a graduate of Madonna High School. He served active duty in the United States Marine Corps from 2015 to 2019, and inactive Ready Reserve Program until November of 2022, where he received an honorable discharge at the rank of Corporal. He served in the United States Marine Corps as an airport firefighter at Marine Corps Air Station in Yuma Airfield in Yuma, Arizona. Also has training through the United States Marine Corps in hazmat, emergency medical response, and medical trauma and combat medical skills. We welcome both of these young men to our ranks. As I said, they will be graduating tomorrow, 10 o'clock at the Anne Rondell Community College, and then they will begin field training with the senior will play the police officer. So we are just happy to have them.
Fantastic. Oh, they're gonna say their names, so it's very easy. Hey, you both repeat, Jacob. All right, you both would raise your hands and repeat after me, and where I say, state your name. Please don't say, state your name, actually state your name. Chief understands that. All right, I state your name.
I.
Do you swear that I will support?
Do you swear that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And law thereof?
And law thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the duties of police officer of the town of La Plata?
Execute the duties of police officer in the town of La Plata.
According to the constitution and laws of their state.
According to the constitution and laws of their state.
Why, you guys did great. While they're signing and making it official, I met these, I call them young men, these officers to be a year ago, and it's seemed like forever that it has taken, and you guys really embraced the community and the volunteerism that comes along with that. And I am really, I'm on Jacob, is also a police officer too. So I don't know if it's the name, I don't know what it is. So I really understand what you all go through as a mom who has a son as a police officer, and I was a daughter of a police officer. So it can be a lot of fun, but it can be very challenging. So I appreciate you all doing very well in the academy. Best of luck tomorrow when you graduate, and I can't wait to see you guys out on the road.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to sign this, and then it's official. All right, some words. Jacob, you go first.
There's one thing everybody's been counting on your support, Jacob and I. Especially my family and the department too, and especially at the town of La Plata, thank you for giving us the opportunity, and just looking forward to a prosperous career down there.
Yeah, thank all of you. It was definitely a long road, but very worth it. And yes, we'll do the best we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So important to hand you a supportive slap.
Presenting with your badges. Thanks. Remember that oath you just built. Our responsibility is more complex to each other, to our citizens, our partner. So it's of importance. So, so many were bad.
Forget me, okay? You're still official, by the way. This is the real official one. It's the director, the tense, the done. All right, this brings us to the next portion of our agenda, public comment. If anybody would like to speak? Come on up. All right, we're gonna go on to the next. Mac, would you come on down?
I'm gonna take my usual place.
Yes, yes.
My life.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be back here. Beautiful, beautiful day out. As all of you know, I'm a farmer, and I was actually making hay while the sun shined today, and so.
As of the attention, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, our proposal got involved in the battle, I want to know, look at how the revenues were generated, but it came down to, was it different between the house and the Senate? MML liked the methodology for distribution of revenue that was coming from taxes. However, they didn't like the amount, they liked the amount that was in the Senate version. Five percent was just two and a half percent. We worked very, very closely with MML and their folks, talked with my people, and especially Senator Jacob, who carried the bill for. And we were able to get both the methodology and the eight percent. It's not hundreds of millions of dollars, but it's a profit a little bit, but that will help. You know, these new officers that you have coming on, they're going to be more of an enforcement deeds with that associated with that, especially where the distribution standards are located. So it's very, very important that municipalities got their fair share. Some of our municipalities have more people than some of the counties have, and that was what I think to do. The other thing that was good news that came back to us, you know, was the money that we got for the startup of the feasibility study and the engineering.
For the police station, it's very, very evident, just seeing these new officers here, that a little tiny station that you have is just not adequate. So we were very, very fortunate. We got $500,000 in Governor Hogan's budget. Governor Hogan's budget, but as you know, he was a lame duck governor, and the final sale of the budget came to the new governor coming in. Unfortunately, the new governor did not put the money in the budget. So we went in gear. We took a three-pronged approach. We interviewed, went with, to see if we could get the governor, Governor Moore, to put the money back in the budget. Also, we looked at having ducks lined up, that we talked to the legislative leaders, especially the committee chairs, to let them know and educate them about the need that we have, as well as our delegations. So we took a three-pronged approach, hoping to get some money. And unfortunately for the delegation, the delegation, as you all probably know, I don't know why they did it, but they had their bond bill night before the general election. And at that time, La Plata was still engaged in this feasibility study for the Smo building. And unfortunately, the price tag was just such that it was unaffordable. And so we made the pitch, and I will tell you, it made a very big impression. Two of the key people that of note were Mike, Michael Jackson, who was very, very supportive of the project, and the chairman of the Capitol Budget Subcommittee on the Senate side, Senator Craig Zucker. We met with him, we met with the delegation, the mayor came up and worked the bill. We had a presentation before the Southern, Charles County delegation, excuse me. But it was very obvious to us that we weren't going to get it. So we immediately went and had a meeting with Senator Zucker. He was very, very supportive of it, but by that time, all the money had been committed. And he said to me, Mac, if we had some extra money, I would certainly be willing to support the project. And we're very, very fortunate on the cornerstone to have three people that served on the Budget Taxation Committee, and they watched the budget. And it just so happened, when the budget came out, we realized that one of our clients, Maryland Troopers Association, had a bond bill request in for $100,000 for some improvements at their station. The budget had $1 million, not $100,000, so there's $900,000. By the grace of God, it showed up, and of course, we had our projects lined up, so we were able to get the $100,000. So that's the first step. It's not enough. We recognize we're going to have to have a lot more to do to the feasibility study, the design, and then engineering. And the pitch that we made to the legislative leadership was, look, La Plata spent a lot of money, you know, looking at the possibility of taking the Southern Maryland Oil Bill and converting it into a new police station, and that's a right thing to do. You know, when you have a vacated building, to the extent government needs, you ought to look at that rather than having it sit there. I think if any of you, any of us knew that the price tag would be what it is, we would have gone down that route. But that's money that you spent, it's money that you'll never get back. Thus, the need for some assistance here. So the conversation we had with Senator Zucker is, we'd like to, in the interim, spend more time with him, hopefully that he will be supportive of the project. And that's the next point. I had sent the mayor and Brett an invitation to a fundraiser that Senator Zucker is going to have. I think it would be nice just for us to show up and show our appreciation, and just to set the stage for when we do sit down with him, so that it will support. I have got tickets. If anybody wants to go, you can go as my guest, be happy to go, and maybe we could even carpool to it. It's in Montgomery County. I think it's the 21st of this month. I think it is.
So next Wednesday.
If anybody is interested in going, just let me know so we can get together and go up. But I think it would be good just to go up and meet him and express our thanks to him. So that was pretty much what wrapped up the session. So just back to the other issues that we're working on. We had a sunny-die reception, and very, very fortunate. And the coincidence, sometimes the stars just line up right. There was a regional director for Coca-Cola. And so I've become very enthusiastic about this project, because at the last meeting, I discussed this with it, and I noticed 150% interest in this project from the entire council. So we, he said, let's go ahead and set something up. The mayor was going to be out of town for a month, so we decided that once she gets back from Hawaii, we try to set something up. So where we are now, in advance of the meeting, he asked to have a synopsis of the project. And Brett prepared that and sent it to him, and it is really, really well done. It lays it out so well. I don't know if you've seen it, but it goes back to the visioning process that La Plata undertook prior to the tornado coming through, back in, I believe, 2000, where it was 2001?
Correction. Kelly, our Director of Legislative Services, prepared that report. I don't like taking credit for someone else's work. I only take the blame when it's bad. I don't take the credit.
That's very, very good of you, very, very good of you. But anyway, it was very, very well done, and so we sent it to him, and I followed up with the call to see if he had any questions that were there. So as soon as we hear back from the regional, then we plan to set it up. So just, you know, when you get into this whole entire land purchase deal, we're at the beginning stage of now. But as we get into this, you know, those types of things probably have to be, anytime you talk about land purchase and whatnot, you probably ought to be doing it in a legal session. So we'll have to develop a process for an ongoing discussion. But our hope is that we can meet with Penel and have him come down, and so he can see what we're talking about, and then go from there. So that's it on the Coca-Cola site. The, as you all know, we had a very, very good session with the state highway, Maryland State Highway Department doing the visioning for the Route 6 Carter. I got a couple of emails about how well attended it was, and the input was exceptional is the word that I got back. So that project is moving forward. An area of concern is that there's a lot of federal money in that. That's all federal money from the ARPA money. And we do not know what, to what extent this clawback, this deal that was made, it hasn't been finalized yet, but our folks in DC are aware. We have a lot of projects around the various states that we operate in that have ARPA projects, to what extent this project is going to be impacted. I think the pathway that we have taken to move this project, the minute we got notice that we got the funding, we have not missed a beat to make sure that it keeps going, because we knew that, you know, sooner or later, if we didn't spend that money, it was going to be clawback. So hopefully, we're far enough along the project. John Bahannon, who works for Congressman Hoyer's, on top of this issue, and he doubts very seriously that they will go that deep into a project. It's that money that's been set there, that has been allocated, will probably be what's going to be the target for the clawback. So I think the work that we've done is, hopefully, is going to be to our benefit. That money will continue to be there. I have a meeting, Bobby and I, Bobby Saul and I, have a meeting with Commissioner Bowling to discuss a couple of issues, in particular, water appropriation. You know, when we met with some of the folks trying to develop a strategy, where do we go in order to bring the county around so we can get an agreement that all parties agreed to, that probably the person, a key pivotal person is Commissioner Bowling. This is his commissioner district, so we're meeting. It took a long time to get the meeting, but we're finally going to get the meeting tomorrow morning. And Bobby just told me tonight that Jason Groth is going to be at that meeting. We were hoping that it was going to be an in-person meeting, but it's going to be a virtual meeting. So if that's the best we can get, we'll take it. So had some discussions with the new secretary for the Department of the Environment that ultimately is going to make this decision, that at some point in time, when the when the atmosphere down here is conducive enough where we can get this back up to the front burner, to really hope that they will be engaged with us. The proposal that one of the folks from MDE came up with, the town of La Plata has looked at, think that it's a fair deal. I looked at it, and I always say, a fair thing is a pretty thing. It looks fair to me. You know, the way it was proposed, the folks at La Plata would pay the same amount as the people outside of La Plata pay. So to me, that's an equivalency of fairness, and that's the way it should be. So that issue is pending, as is the box elder property there, and also the sidewalks. We saw some movement with the sidewalks. After the last meeting I had with Ruben, we got an email from the person at Planning and Growth Management about the fact that there's, what, $60,000 there? And is that going to be enough to do the whole entire feasibility, the whole entire study for it? And if not, is the town going to be willing to pick up additional money? First of all, I don't think that we should spare doing it right. You know, I doubt that $60,000 is going to be enough. It's probably going to need more. That's the first thing. But also, we drew it to his attention that when I was the county commissioner, prior to me becoming a county commissioner, Marlon Dean, you may remember David, I don't know if you were around then, but the county commissioners at that time supported the project and said that they would commit $100,000 to it. So we want to know is that $60,000 that you have in the budget plus this $100,000? So we have to know what money is there. I still haven't heard back from Ruben, but I asked him if he would try to ascertain so that we would get some certainty exactly how much money we've got coming from the county. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell of the projects that we have been working on. So I'm, again, delighted to be here, and certainly if there's any follow-up, any questions that you have, be happy to answer.
Well, I just want to thank you for being here and all of your hard work, especially getting the money for the feasibility study. That is awesome. So we can move forward and now know, I don't know when our delegation is going to meet again, but we'll have something prepared for that, for whatever we're going to ask on that. But I will open it up to council. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave Jenkins, Ward 4. Thank you, Senator Middleton, again, for your work for on our behalf. And you mentioned Commissioner Dean, and I remember that, but I also remember there was a set of drawings for that project. And at one time, ballpark of a million dollars. I don't know what it would be now, but anyway.
Yeah, that was for the, I think that was the actual cost of the construction.
Yeah, and that was X amount of years ago, so I'm sure, but I do remember a set of drawings.
Back in the early 80s.
Yes.
And we also have all of the approvals upstairs where we did get the residents to sign off on it. There was a difference in price, and for some reason, it didn't move forward. So we did at one time have the right-of-way permission, so we'll get it again.
Yeah, I hope so, sooner than later. I mean, it's never been more needed than it is right now, my gosh.
And then just real quick on the downtown development plan, Coke plant issue. That summary or synopsis report, would that be available for us to look at as well, just for information sharing or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And then, so this individual was a VP out of Atlanta or local?
The regional directors for Coca-Cola, and he had to move it up, take it up the channels is where, is what he needed.
So do you see some kind of an in-person meeting?
Yes, that's what expectations are next. What we thought we would do is just do a preliminary one with the town mayor and the town manager and the mayor. And then hopefully after that, when we get some indication whether or not they want to move for it now, then have a formal presentation of it before the full council.
And probably not during main today, but I'm curious how many still work there? Because I remember one time they said 50, but I don't know what it is now.
It's not a whole lot there at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Al Valentino represents the beverage, the Coca-Cola and Pepsi Colas and whatnot. And she's been very instrumental in getting us together with that stuff.
Again, thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely. Just one thing, has the town finished its budget?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We'll find out later tonight. It's on the agenda for this evening.
Yeah, one of the things that I had mentioned to Senator Zucker with the $100,000, that, you know, in the event that the town wanted to move forward with this project, and, you know, the $100,000 isn't near enough, could the money that they put forward be used as an incon match to the overall amount that we would get from them? So if there's anything in the budget for it, will help, I think, help to show the commitment. And I'm not trying to tell you how to do your budget, but if it is in the budget, go ahead and start moving that for, the project for it, then we can demonstrate that, that would be an incon. We're not expecting everything from the state that we're moving forward as well.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just to build on what Mr. Middleton was saying on Washington Avenue sidewalks, we actually anticipate an agenda item next week that will provide for an agreement between the town and county to pass the $60,000 from the county through to the town, so that we can hire our consultant, Meaden Hunt, to proceed with the design, or the, it's not design, but the investigation feasibility study. So we anticipate that coming back, which I say will include an agreement as well as the scope of work for the feasibility study from Meaden Hunt. So potentially, we could see that next week, if we can get things turned around.
That would be very good.
And we would.
Date it back to 1960, the first time they started talking about putting sidewalks on Washington.
Yeah, the town cover the difference between the $60,000 the county has identified as available for the project would be an additional, I think it's less than $30,000. And we have $75,000, I believe, in ARPA funds that have been designated for sidewalk improvement. So that's where the money would come from to make up the difference.
Fantastic. Moving forward. Thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome. And if you don't have anything else of me, I'm going to go back to my fields.
All right. Thank you very much.
I've got a little bit, I had to go take a shower and shave and get in the suit. Now I'm going to go back and get my dumplings.
At least you got a little rain yesterday. It was nice.
Oh, my gosh. I did a rain dance.
I, so did I.
My heart was just so pleased that we finally got a rain.
And it was a heavy one at one point.
You know, when you're farming, I know Jimmy, you know about it, you identify with your crops. When those poor little plants are sitting there, they're suffering, and they're dying, you just want to help them out so badly. And then when you get this rain, it's just so nice. And also, on the farm this weekend, we have the Southern Maryland Polo Lacrosse Association. They lease part of my farm, and every year they have an annual polo lacrosse event. It's a tournament. It's that, this weekend, it starts Friday evening. It's all day Saturday, and it finishes up at noon on Sunday. There's no admissions. So if you have any family or friends that want to come up, bring your tent, pack a picnic lunch, and come on up and enjoy. So.
Thank you very much. All right, well, be safe out there.
Okay, thank you very much. It is a pleasure. I'll say on behalf of Cornerstone, La Plata is one of our favorite clients. We love working with you, so.
Well, thank you. You do a fabulous job. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to matter of council discussion, and we have Jamie on the line. Jamie, are you there?
I am. Good afternoon, good evening.
Hello there.
Hello. So.
Hello. So Mr. Manuel, I don't know if there's anything first or should I go first?
You are pretty hard to hear right now, or maybe it's just me. Can you speak up a little bit or we can turn you on? Hmm. We'll listen.
Any better?
No, we'll listen attentively. Maybe it's just my ears that are clogged, but you're you're very soft spoken today.
All right. I'll do my best.
Oh, that's that's better.
That's better. Good. Okay. So Jamie Kendrick Meaden Hunt, back to talk to you. I think we briefed the council maybe 45 days or so ago about the next steps on the radio station road side path. We submitted the application for construction funds, excuse me, to M dots around May 15th, I believe it was June 1st and have received, you know, positive feedback. We expected that because once you're in their pipeline, they want to see move, they want to see projects move through to construction. So we feel positive about the grant. So what we said we would do is come back after the grant and identify the three or four steps that need to occur before we get the grant agreement in place with M dots, which would be sometime sometime towards the end of this calendar year, they will announce the awards around Labor Day. And then usually takes about three months or so to get under agreement. So the next steps I believe are in your packet for tonight. And bear with me one second. They are to take the design from the 90% phase to to the final construction drawings. There were a handful of of changes that were requested by the school system, by Wreckin Parks and by Dior Horton that needed to be made in our final plan set. We have some more coordination to do with AgroCopia. So that's one piece of the money, or one piece of the request tonight, excuse me. The next set is there are about a dozen or so property. I will use the term acquisitions, but that's probably a strong term, rights of entry, easements and maybe one small fee, simple purchase, but more than likely all easements would be or rights of entry will be required. Some are with the county or the Board of Education, others are with homeowners associations. So we just need to get those formalized kind of as you referenced with with the Washington Avenue project. We don't anticipate that these will be of any major cost. Frankly, the the bigger cost is getting all the legal documents prepared for these transactions. They're more more expensive than the actual cost of the property itself typically, unfortunately. The third thing is that we need to process the final stormwater permit, the final S H A access permit and the environmental clearance and permits. There's I think three environmental permits that have to be achieved for this. We did manage to minimize all of the environmental impact. So we have no mitigation requirements, but still have to go through the official permitting process for tree clearing and the like. And then finally, two more things. Utility relocation. So there is, we need to have a further conversation with State Department of Information Technology. There's a fiber line that runs along Maryland six. There may need to be a small relocation. They've indicated they will pay for that. We may have to do a little bit of design work, but they will pay for the relocation. There may be a Smecko pole or two near Clark's Run. We're going to have to wait and see what the construction contractor says about whether we need to move that for them or not. And then there's one piece that has to be done with Bobby near Willow Lane, I believe, that'll be done in conjunction with some work that D R Horton is doing. So there's some utility relocation designed to be completed. The final element of the structure is designed to meet S H A requirement at Clark's Run. And that completes the everything through the time when we put a shovel on the ground. So I think the total comes out to a hun- just under $160,000. That includes frankly, most of that is for our sub consultants to do the permitting work and the right of way work. Excuse me. And that does not include, say, the actual cost of utility relocation, which would be in the actual project itself, does not include any right of way costs. Again, we think those will be nominal. And that's where we are.
Fantastic. Thank you. It looks like we're moving along, which is very exciting.
I was going to say we're about a year ahead of schedule. From when we from when we first talked about this, you could have taken the route that had you know, done a feasibility study with a state grant, then come for a state grant for design, then come from a state grant for construction, but you all decided wisely, in my view, to get a year ahead of the process and that's where we are.
Wonderful. A quick question for AgroCopia. Since they have not turned over any of the roads to us yet, is it going to be easier to negotiate with them to get a right of way? Cause that's the HOA and that's actually the builder?
Yes.
Okay.
Significantly easier. I think it's actually five or six different parcels there that we need to to deal with. So hoping is hoping that he will respond sooner rather than later.
Okay. Wonderful. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jamie? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave Jenkins Ward for, thank you again for the progress on the update. Just a couple of questions. So there's no need for any other public meetings at all. I noticed in your proposal or your cost estimate?
We'll probably come back and do one around the time of grant award to give a public update, assuming that's an evening meeting and we don't charge for that.
Okay, thank you. And then maybe you know, or maybe Director Stahl knows, what is the quote utility construction that's now underway along radio station road? There's pipes being put in the ground.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Did Mr. Stahl respond or no?
What's happened is they hired Hardy Underground to install six inch HDP conduits and then they're going to pull electric wiring through conduit now. So they're starting to bury conduit instead of direct burying wires that they have. But that's what that was all of them. We we've been working directly with Hardy trying to get all our stuff located.
Thank you. And then I'm assuming you made reference to the current pedestrian bridge along Route six before you get to Pine Grove. I assume that's going to be the width for the roadway. Is it going to be wider or narrower or what?
Yeah, it'll be it'll be a 10 foot wide bridge from, yeah.
And then the source for the future, what would be the source of funds for construction? Another grant or it'll be a town match?
So we submitted the transportation alternatives program and bikeways grants. I want to say it was around 1.6, 1.7. The way that we've structured it is that the town's final match on the construction would be in the 75 to 100,000 range. Typically it's an 80 20, but because of the money the county has spent to date, the state is inclined to lower the match significantly. I'm thinking it's going to be in the 75 to 100 neighborhood.
Okay. And then finally, I guess probably getting ahead, but best guess for maybe start of construction?
If we are under construction this time next year, I'll be thrilled.
Thank you. Thanks for the work. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Hendrix, thanks for the presentation and for the work that you're doing on this project. I know, I think, I don't know if it was the last time you were in front of us, but it was recently where we spoke about kind of the timing to look towards talking to the state about improvements upon 488, like now being a good time to do it. I think with the multitude of projects that we have and with the state's attention with Route six as well as this project. This path is very, I mean, obviously it's going into AgroCopia and it's coming over 488. It's very close to King's Grant, which is in my ward and a very significant development as far as the the town goes. I mean, can we not look towards a, you know, and this has come up as the mayor knows, a number of times over the, you know, probably a decade, but getting a crossing area or a light or something. And is this not a good time to do it? Looking at or at least a request or feasibility study or something, because it seems to be a shame the way that this route goes and the way that all the the development is is looking at, you know, in town, looking towards making it more pedestrian and bike friendly to leave out a neighborhood that's just so close to the path itself. You're almost inviting traffic incidents to occur just to allow them to access the bike path. Do you know what I'm saying there?
I do. I'm trying to look at it on a map while we're while we're talking here. And think of what the best approach would be. And if you don't mind, I'd like to come back and talk about it with Brent after the fact.
That's no problem.
I need to get my head around it.
I would just be remiss if we didn't look at it. And I know we're we're kind of far along, but it may be more helpful given the plans that have been put together to say, hey, look, we've got plans for Route six to make it more, you know, bike friendly and everything else and with this path, but why are we going to invite, you know, a danger just just north of where the path access is available and where we already have access to Tillman Lake, you know, the park right there.
So so I'm so I'm clear. What's the intersection?
Yeah, that's true. There isn't really an intersection there. There is, yeah, at our at King's Grand entrance at Suffolk. You can cross over to a path that goes to Tillman Lake. That's not a road per se, but it's heavily trafficked pedestrian and bike path area. And look, I mean, you can.
It's actually how the subdivision is connected to the town is by this path. It's sort of a flag type annexation that included the path to get the property to the town proper. You know, I sort of envisioned sort of a next phase being, you know, we have actually talked to State Highway about flashing beacons at that crossing. And of course we get the, they don't meet the warrants, so we won't do it. But you know, maybe if we spent money and maybe the next phase, because you could say the same thing about Clark's Run, we're extending this sort of towards downtown, but the next phase being sort of interconnecting Clark's Run and King's Grant to the to the grid, if you will.
Yeah. And it's it's, you know, it's not to be, maybe we don't overall try to connect every single neighborhood with a bike network, but it's almost an attractive new sector in a way, right? Because you you've got it so close, but no access point to do it safely other than the ride up north 488, which at this present time, like, and I think the last time you were here, you had mentioned maybe speed adjustments or whatever to 488 to allow for Route six to kind of flourish the way that the vision is is, you know, looking at in the future. But yeah, take a look, you know, and let us know what thoughts are.
The path, the path there that crosses Suffolk Drive across 488. Excuse me, one second. The the path there that crosses and then goes back up to Tillman Park. I do think, and I don't know what the conversation has been with with S H A, but I do think that would be another good candidate for a flashing beacon. Yeah, I think we slowed the traffic down. I think we bring, if we're bringing Maryland six down from, I want to say it's 40 to 30 or 45 to 35. We ought to be able to do the same on 40 on that part of 488. And then that would get us in a better position for a flashing beacon.
Well, and you know, Jamie, I think a really easy, quick fix on that would be just to get painting across the 488 to bring awareness, which is an automatic traffic calmer coming mechanism anyway. And I walk, I haven't done it lately, but I would walk downtown and I will not go on 488. I will cross, go on that little road there, go down Box Elder and then go down radio station because it's much safer that way. And once the bike path is in there, that could be a way for people that you're going to have the kids walking or riding bikes to school from King's Grant, I would think the the high schoolers. And although we don't have a whole lot of accidents there, when we get an accident there, it is memorable. They are you that the the vehicle is not leaving on its own. It is being towed there. And there have been several, several. I might've been one of them that was rear ended at a high speed back in the day. So it does become a danger out there. And just something as simple as the crosswalks, which we fought for, and they had someone that sat there, state sat there. And they said they only had 10 people cross that day. Well, I mean, what was the weather? What was the day? What, you know, all of that.
My issue with my issue with warrant studies, people aren't doing that because it's not safe to do that.
Yeah.
So no wonder you only had 10 people. If it were safe to do it, you'd have 30.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I will add my prejudice. I I ride my bike. And so when I come to, so I'm coming down the path from Lake Toma and I stop. I get off my bike. I don't, I don't, and I look and even on a Sunday morning, a couple of times, there've been people rolling through there at about 65 miles an hour.
Well, because.
And that time I videotaped it.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little hill there. There's a little and.
It's a little unnecessary biking. That's a really big, at least make.
So so I would agree with you, Jamie, that the warrant is like, it tells me, so we got to wait till somebody gets hurt before we do something.
We've had injuries.
Well, that's an arcane way to looking at it.
Yeah. But you know what? If if the conversation presents itself, we would greatly appreciate the little plug there and maybe at M M L when we are speaking with our district out there, we could put that plug in. There's five of us here and we can each hit them at different times and they will. That's true.
I think as Brent, as Brent indicated, it's always easier if you can bring them a plan. You can, if you can bring them something that a traffic engineer says works and meets their standards, then that usually gets the conversation started a lot, a lot faster than just, hey, we have a problem.
Well, in the HOA at one point was willing to kick in some money to help facilitate that. I cannot imagine that paint across 488 is that expensive.
Oh, it's it's not a money issue. It's a will issue. And I would, I would say, I would say the same thing with the flashing beacons on Maryland six. We have and I would beg again for, I know you've been helpful, Madam Mayor. We have one property owner we've been, had a miserable time getting a hold of to place, to place one sign so that we can get this thing off the dime. So I'll email you about that again later and hopefully we can get it done.
Please do. We'll get it done. We'll get it done. Well, great. Well, thank you so much. Any other questions? Keep plugging along. I love to hear we are a year ahead of schedule. So keep keep pushing. Maybe at this time we'll have two years ahead of schedule by the next report. So thank you very much, Jamie. I appreciate that. And please do email me with an update on that and I will circle back.
Madam Mayor, I believe we're looking for a consensus to move this to the legislative portion of our agenda.
Thank you very much. Do we have a consensus? I will start with Councilman Goldsmith, Councilman Challenger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes, we will move this forward. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Manuel. All right. We are talking some trash now. All right.
Well, a couple of notes of good news that I'd like to pass along. The brick work was fixed out at Clark's Run over the weekend. And so the installation of the sign will take place tomorrow afternoon.
Why did we fix that? Wasn't that a driver that fell asleep?
Correct. But even if like, for instance, a driver falls asleep and hits your house, you still actually, because you own the house, you actually do the contracting work. They don't fix it for you. You have it fixed and then you, the insurance company pays the bill. And so in this case, we will get a bill from Empire for the additional brick work and we will then charge the insurance company back.
That that was there. Thank goodness. It could have been a house. It could have been a house that they hit. Wow.
I will tell you that the sheer luck of the fact, the thing that we waited on was the sign to be manufactured. That sign was to be installed at nine o'clock that morning. And the brick was hit at 6:15. So if it had have been, you know, a little bit different timing, the day before we had installed the sign, we'd be back to another long wait for the sign. So as bad as it is for, you know, accidents and for the people who get hurt in those type of crashes, this, the nice thing in this case was that we hadn't actually installed the sign. And so we do still have the sign and they're going to put it up tomorrow. So. And so we do still have the sign, and they're gonna put it up tomorrow, so that's a good thing. The other thing I would pass along is that we are, um, we did get all three of the water towers uh finished, so they all, if you've taken a look at them, all look very, very nice, um, good finish. Southern Groschen did a very nice job with it. We didn't have any complaints of paint overspray or things, uh, and they they really did uh turn out very nicely, so I think um, that was a positive step for us. The other thing, we are on a um, a major water outage down on three oh one tonight, so our guys will be out most of the night. Um, we are putting a three-way valve in down on the main um to feed the motel down behind Panda Express. And at the same time, we're running the new twenty-four inch sewer line behind the hydrant there at Wesley Drive. When we dug up next to the hydrant, the hydrant was unrestrained. So because of the danger of how close we're digging to it, we wanted to make sure and take an outage for that, so we're doing them both at the same time tonight. So gradient's down there working on the sewer line, and my guys are down there working on the water line. So hopefully by morning, we will have uh some progress on both notes, so it should be positive. Um, with that, thank you very much for hearing from me tonight. Um, I bring to you another trash can order. Uh, the price is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Um, we have been working with Schaefer now for the past ten years with the cans that we have. They do have our artwork. Um, the cans, even as much as inflation has gone up, are still very reasonably priced from, you know, when we were buying them ten years ago at fifty dollars, and today we're still paying less than sixty dollars for the full-size can. I think it's been a good price for us. Um, we did shop it around a little bit to see if what we were having, but we do find that Schaefer is still the best price for the town of La Plata. Um, we need to stay ahead because we just need to get plenty of cans in because we're seeing some growth. Um, we keep them in storage, and it's nice when people move into the town to be able to give them their new can. And so I recommend to you that you would allow me to go ahead and uh purchase that, and we'll have Brent sign the purchase order and get those cans ordered.
I will thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, but it's a pretty busy.
Questions on this? It's pretty straightforward.
We're looking, oh, you do have a question. Yeah. Where are the funds coming from?
They're coming from the sanitation budget. We budget for uh new trash cans every year. It's part of the capital cost, and we're pulling it. Basically, it comes out of sanitation fund balance.
All right, so we're looking for a consensus to move this forward. Councilman Goldsmith, Councilman Challenger. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes too, so we will see this in just a bit.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, brings us to legislation.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Uh, first item is Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Fee Schedule. Uh, this is for a second reading and for consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning fiscal year twenty twenty-four Fee Schedule for the purpose of adopting the fee schedule dealing with fees set by the town of La Plata in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Fee Schedule as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one on the agenda is Ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Uh, Ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Financial Plan Budget. And this is also up for a second reading and for consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Financial Plan Budget for the purpose of adopting the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four F Y twenty-four Financial Plan Budget in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen as presented?
I accept uh twenty-three dash fifteen, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Plan twenty twenty-four Financial Plan Budget.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Uh, any discussion?
Just, I just had a comment that I would thank the staff for the and the department heads for the work. I know this year is perhaps a little bit more, this is a little bit more challenging, so thank you for your reference.
And all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Great job. New treasurer and your team there, so thank you very much. That brings us down to uh Resolution twenty-three dash twenty.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Radio Station Road Bike Way Professional Services Agreement for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. A resolution concerning Radio Station Road Bike Way such Professional Services Agreement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for professional services for the Radio Station Road Bike Way Project in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twenty as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion uh to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twenty Radio Station Road Bike Way Professional Services Agreement as presented.
Do I have a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then that brings us to Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Trash and Recycling Containers for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. A resolution concerning trash and recycling container purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of trash and recycling carts.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one as presented? Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Brings us to our commission reports. Uh, Councilman Goldsmith? Okay, Councilman Challenger?
Terms expire, so I'm still waiting to figure out how I'm gonna be able to say the things.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the Planning Commission approved the annual report um that's due um by the first of July, and we have an interview for a candidate for the Planning Commission on Friday um today, this week.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, two, two, two reports. First, the Recreation Recreation Commission uh will bring forward a um request to re- to reappoint Vicky Kelly as chairperson of the commission. And then number two, uh, the Tri-County Council's Bicycle by Eastern Infrastructure Advisory Committee, of which I'm a member of, we meet quarterly. Our last meeting was June the eighth. Uh, there was a, uh, most of the agenda was about projects, updates from each of the three counties. I had the opportunity to provide an update to the committee about the Route Six projects and other projects in and around La Plata. Uh, of of interest to perhaps us, i- in Charles County, they provided an update. They have a project that's uh improving sidewalks and a complete streets project on Smallwood Drive all the way from Middletown Road, crossing U S three oh one and going over to Saint Charles Parkway. So they're uh developing a R F P for Professional Services for feasibility study for that project. So that was somewhat encouraging that they're moving that forward. So I just wanted to bring that to to your attention.
All right.
Thank you.
And I have a quick report. Um, this month uh is actually Nat- National Leasercity has designated this month as Small Cities Month, and uh it it's pretty cool how they really incorporate all of the cities and towns municipalities throughout the United States to try to get ideas. But they were saying that uh we, under fifty thousand population is home to millions of Americans um here, and it's all about the organizations, businesses, and citizens, partner, being partners together to really get the success of our small towns and cities. And two little factoids on this. Um, now, you can dig deep on anything, I'm sure, and find what you want, but according to Money Inc., uh, the magazine, La Plata ranks number five as one of the ten richest places in Maryland. And it also ranks number five as one of the top ten places to retire in Maryland. So I thought that was a positive um note to end on, and I just want to remind you of our concert series that's on Fridays. We have had some amazing, amazing talent uh grace our stage on Friday, and this week is Flipping Eyelids. Next week is Water's Edge, and to all of you out there that are dads, Happy Father's Day. I hope you have a wonderful weekend. And with that, I move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much. Have a great night.